Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the April 20th, 2021 City Council Budget Workshop and our regular business meeting. This session will be conducted remotely and council members will only participate electronically. To those viewing online, please ensure that you join this meeting using the following website, And if by chance you join using any other link, we ask you that, we ask that you log off and then re-log on using that website. Public comments on any item appearing on the agenda may be sent to public comment@louisstonmain.gov prior to and during the meeting, and all comments received will be forwarded to the City Council. And members of the public during our business meeting can request to us to have a public comment by raising your hand. Once they are acknowledged, their microphones will be unmuted and they will be invited to make a brief comment. With that said, we'll move right to the 6:00 PM Budget Workshop. Yep.
I just want to make sure. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilors. We, based upon the email that I had forwarded this afternoon, hopefully you've all had a chance to at least pull it up, and that's kind of what I'm going to be reviewing at this point in time, taking feedback from the last couple workshops as well as items that were on the parking lot and vetting through all of that. Here's where we are suggesting headed for your FY22 budget. So I will start with the tax rate worksheet. And this has been amended not only to include the school committees' approved budget at this point, but also with the adjustments that I had furnished or attached in that PDF. So at this juncture, you will see with the adjustments, the city expenditures total $50,001,20 to $790. It's a .83% increase over FY21. If you look at the city non-tax revenues down at the bottom there, you will see that we are anticipating non-tax revenues to be about $13,63,311 or an 8.93% increase. As a reminder, the bulk of that increase is in state revenue sharing. I have still not received any kind of estimates in state revenue sharing at this juncture. So it's still a rather conservative number at this point. You will also note that we are not planning on using fund balance to balance the FY22 budget at this juncture. So having kind of put those numbers in place, you will see the proposed tax levy on the city side is $34,47,239 or a 2.91% increase. Rolling down to the actual tax rate, that produces a city tax rate of $17.19, as outlined by the school superintendent. With the amended approved budget, the school's budget is $11.38 and the county tax is $1.50, producing a tax rate of $30.07 or a $1.40 increase or 4.89% at this juncture. If there are no questions on the tax rate component, I'll kind of go through the budget adjustments with you, if that makes sense. Okay. So looking at the budget adjustments, and they are numbered, so if there's any questions, you can just tell me what line item you are looking at. The first adjustment deals with the new audit bid, as I mentioned during the review of the miscellaneous expense section of the budget. We were able to adjust the audit fees down based upon the new five-year contract. The next three line items deal with the CDBG funding, the CDBG cares funding, the case worker position we added back in the current fiscal year. The next line, five through 11, reflects the hiring of the DEI specialist, and that is budgeted at a full year for that position at this point. This is a new program and service, so it is adding back or increasing the budget, which is why those are all negative numbers. Additionally, based upon feedback from the workshop, another new programs and services included in the budget reflects two crisis workers at $98,000. Again, that's a negative because we are adding that to the budget. It wasn't in the budget to start with. I know there's been discussion, the police chief and I, and I think the city administrator all talked in different phone conversations today, that there is the possibility of one of those case crisis workers being an earmark. If that were to happen, we can, you can go ahead and approve this, and if we got an earmark, we could do a supplemental appropriation to either put it towards a police officer's position or something else, or just let it lapse in fund balance. So there are alternatives if that should come to fruition. Lines 13 through 16 reflect the highway equipment operator with a start date of October 1st, which gets this position online and with enough time to start doing dry runs with the department and so forth. This position was a frozen position. This is a budget adjustment because we are taking a credit for the first quarter of the fiscal year, so that is a savings. Lines 17 through 25 reflect the two patrol officers that were frozen, based upon feedback with the police chief, as well as discussions and their vacant positions and the timing of getting patrol officers into the academy and so forth. There was a level of comfort of pulling those from the budget at this juncture. Kind of a pseudo-replacement is line 26 through 31, and that reflects the promotions from patrol officer to detective. And I will add that line 29, 30, and 31 is detective to sergeant. I got a little crazy with the cut and paste. So that is really detective to sergeant. That's the second new program and service that he requested. Again, those are negative amounts because we are adding back those additional funding Lines 32 through 36 reflect the two mechanic positions that are frozen. We are looking at having one start October 31st, so we will save the first quarter worth of wages and benefits. We are looking at having the second one start January 1st, so we are saving the first six months worth of benefits and salaries for that. That way, they currently have two vacancies and then they have two frozen positions. It allows them to spread out those positions and get people trained and so forth, rather than having a whole new crew starting at once. Line 37 through 45, I'm sorry, 44, the engineering tech three position was a frozen position. We are keeping that frozen for another fiscal year, so that reflects taking that position out of the budget. The hydrant rental adjustment, our line 45, reflects the water rate increase, but we phased that in. So once that's finalized, we were able to capture the phase in for the first quarter and have, and provide that savings of the $38,700. Most of the other, kind of just going through there, talking to departments, our department authorized adjustments, you will see, or you will see in the training, that we are looking at encumbering current year funds and cutting or reducing FY22s. Obviously, with COVID, a lot of department have surpluses in their training budget. This is probably a random opportunity that we will be able to do this, but it does afford us that luxury through the FY22 budget. So you will see those kind of go down through to line 54. Going back through some of the details in the MIS department, 55 through 58 reflects items that can be moved to fund balance, based upon either their one-time nature or they're short enough in their useful life. For example, the one that says conversion until we go live, that's for a specific modification that we need to get information to our tax program with us going live, that will have a definite sunset. The upgrade portion of the telephone system can move to fund balance as well as the server upgrades. So that kind of takes those items off of the table from the budget standpoint. So again, we have more smaller adjustments authorized by the department or training that we've talked about. Looking at the utilities, we are revising some of the estimates that we had initially provided, and in some instances, some repairs to equipment, looking at the ability to do some of that, those work this year. Line 64 moves that panic alarm that was required to be replaced with the new 911 radio system that allows that. It's a one-time replacement, so we are moving that, even though it's not much money, we are moving that to fund balance. Same with the HVAC panel on line 66. With the parking garages, because we are having trouble with the system there and the gates and so forth. Line 67 through 77, eliminate or significantly reduce the printing needed for the parking tickets because we haven't had to buy anything because the gates are shut down, and also eliminating the preventive maintenance contract because we don't have software in place to do a preventive maintenance contract with. So that represents pretty much that whole chunk of adjustments. Again, we have some revised estimates on the police insurance, looking at CID overtime, a minor adjustment there, and some training, again, carrying forward current year funds, and then some smaller ones until we get down to line 86. We are looking at, they had a $5,000 item to repair the parking lot, and we are moving that to fund balance because obviously it's, that useful life spreads beyond just the current fiscal year. And again, as you see, department authorized encumbered current year funds for training. I will say on 92, that's PPE. We have, definitely have a warehouse full of PPE stuff still in my office, so I am more than comfortable eliminating or reducing that. The fire inspectors, public safety supplies, and books and so forth, a lot of that can be purchased this year, so we don't have to re-budget appropriate for that next year. I'm trying to go. Highway, we are looking at a small, I'm looking at line 103, a small overtime reduction in highway, based upon what they've been experiencing up to this point. Repairs to signs, they have a surplus in the current year that we can encumber to help offset some of the repairs for the future. Street line painting is a partial flat funding with that, and that again, has a partial surplus from the current year that we can encumber to eliminate a portion of that increase for next year. Winter ops, which are line 107 and 108, based upon the three-year average of mild winters, we are feeling comfortable with overtime and the other supplies, which is salt and sand, recognizing there's still a cushion in there. However, just record, let the record know, if for some reason we get a really bad winter, we may have some issues there that we can adjust for next year as needed. On line 117, that reflects land and light replacement in the downtown area. We're going to move that to fund balance in order to provide that expenditure. Same thing for 100, line 134, looking at the flashing on the armory roof to move to fund balance because that's a one-time authorization that won't have to be repeated annually. The library building 139, our line 139, we are reducing, since they didn't have a lot of traffic this year, and they can clean it this year, looking at one carpet extraction for next year. We've talked about the refunding several times now, looking back through there, we are able to take an additional credit of $60,000 in principal. There was some recalculation on the interest, so part of that is going to be used to satisfy the increase in interest, and, but still leaves a net reduction of $40,000 there. The severance pay and the salary reserve, so the severance pay is line 144, the salary reserve is line 147, that's going back and looking at what we had originally estimated, now that all the positions are in place. I feel that, you know, we're comfortable where those balances are, taking those reductions. Workers' comp, which is line 145, that pushes more of the funding, the unfunded portion of the reserve to fund balance. I'm hoping after this fiscal year and going through another actuarial evaluation with the number of claims that we have closed and cases that we have closed, that that gap shrinks and we won't have to worry about funding at the level that we're currently looking at in the future years. And then other fees, that is for the health insurance, actuarial evaluation for other post-employment benefits. I did not have to do one this year because they allowed us to extend it for the current year due to COVID, so I'm encumbering the current year appropriation and eliminating next year. As a reminder, there were a few items on your parking lot list that will be also funded from the current year. They'll actually be funded in FY22. That includes the $10,000 for jumpstart. We're going to do the children's center for 500, and the loan underwriting training for $20,000. So that will be all taken care of this year as well. On the revenue side of the house, we're still kind of being conservative on the overall revenues. You will notice there's absolutely no adjustments to parking. I am still rather concerned about next year's parking situation. So even though we've had people been remote for over a year now, the parking lot equipment did not go offline until partway through the fiscal year. So those employees and employers that were on the annual plan had already paid. So I'm leaving enough cushion there. If some of those withdraw their registration of their parking pass, we still have a comfort level in our budget estimates for those. We are looking at other registrations increasing by 5,000, the inspector fees by 7,000, general assistance is decreasing by 21,845. That relates to, if you look at lines 30, 31, and 32, that's 70% of those GA reductions. So even though we cut it on the expenditure side for the full amount, we need to cut the anticipated revenue associated with that. So that's why that revenue item is a negative. Then I am looking at a cautiously optimistic revenue sharing bump of $175,000, based upon what we're trending this year. So total revenue adjustments equal $165,177, total expenditure adjustments equal $635,007. And I would be happy to address any questions.
Thank you. If I could, City Administrator Dotay, could you just share your thoughts on this proposed budget? Does it move, is it still moving our city forward? I mean, are you comfortable with some of the cuts that have been suggested?
Sure. Yes, you know, Director Hunter and I reviewed all of this prior to, I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's their cuts and their reductions from the request. I mean, we certainly asked our, our directors to build budgets on what their needs were, conservative budgets underneath. So, you know, it is hard. We're making cuts on things that they feel they need to deliver services. But I do think this is a reasonable budget, and I support, you know, this going forward. I do think it, it meets the needs the best we can under the circumstances, and I think it's, it's a good budget, I think, going forward.
All right, thank you. Counselor Wright?
Thank you. So my one question that just kind of my ears went up, I realize trying to predict next winter storms is really shot in the dark. Can you just describe what might happen if there are a series of bad storms? Are there places we can look? And I'm just a little lost on how we navigate that.
Yes, typically, we go through, and I think it's only happened three times since I've been here. Usually, we're able to balance it with attrition, maybe some health insurance savings, those types of things. In the worst-case scenario, what we would do, or what I would suggest that the city administrator do is enter into a spending freeze. So anything that is not absolutely emergency-related, we put a hold on to see where we end up falling in that winter budget cycle, and then that, that's another way to make up those funds.
Okay, that's really helpful context to have. I think as we're going through, I was like, we still have to clear the roads, so how would we do that?
We don't say, no, you, nobody, yeah.
Yeah. That's helpful to know that this experience has happened before, and it will be reviewed through there. I just, to the city administrator and to Director Hunter, wow, I mean, the direction we gave you felt very vague to me, and I think you nailed it, at least from my perspective. And so I'm feeling really good about where this budget stands. I'm curious, just wanted to jump ahead of folks a little bit, and just as you're reflecting on this budget, if there's thoughts about the school budget and which direction that needs to go, or setting different bounds as that process moves forward, happy to hear those comments as well, just because I think we can see a little better how the two and the county interact with each other now.
Are you asking me to respond to that?
No, I meant council. Sorry.
I was going to say, that's the council purview to that.
All right. So last week, you know, I brought up potentially a city 40% increase, and we kept the school at 60, which would keep us at that dollar range. We'll focus on city. Is there anything else, councilors, any concerns that councilors see with this proposal from Heather and our city administrator? Counselor Cleve?
Thank you. I appreciate you, Heather, and city administrator, and all department heads to, like, looking into this and figuring this out. My only concern is that I just feel like these services and like these cuts and reductions really just puts the city at a difficult place to deliver services to our community members. So I would be up for like looking, like trying to add some things on, onto the budget or, you know, going back to the department heads and asking like, what are more priority things that you need this, this coming year? Because, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I, you know, I'm not sure that it's, it's fair to ask the council to give a thumbs up or, you know, indicate support, but soon we'll have to, you know, really give some guidance here if we would support something like this. So if there are there councilors that are supportive of this, this approach, the way we're going, I mean, it would be important to share that if you know at this point. If not, by the next meeting, we really do need to start, you know, indicating our support or dislike of, of this proposal. Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very shortly, you're going to get a recommendation from the Finance Committee that will speak for itself. What I look at here tonight, we've moved in the right direction. I'm not sure we're there yet, and certainly, the other half of the city budget has got room and is going to have to make a move. I'll tell you right now, I can't support the budget in the present state. The city's done a good job thus far. We may need to sharpen pencils and look and see if there's a few more pennies we can share somewhere, but putting us over the $30 mark is going to be the kiss of death for our goal of economic development, as far as I'm concerned. I thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With the proposal presented by Director Hunter, I, I mean, I think it's, it's great work. It kind of, I guess it doesn't, it really meets the parameters of what we set up in the last time that we met, which was not an easy thing to accomplish by any means, so, you know, very much kudos. You know, yeah, it does feel really disappointing because last year's budget was, you know, under the, you know, pandemic really just starting, and so there's a lot of uncertainty. So now this is kind of like, feels more like a real budget process as opposed to last time. So I can imagine a lot of city councilors in the past have felt this way, where it doesn't really feel like we're, we're, we're providing the city staff with enough resources to really do what we, you know, what we want them to do. And so it does kind of stink, especially knowing that some of the priorities and goals that we have. So I feel like as a city council, we're not really arming our staff with, with all the tools they need, but we're just in a position where we really can't raise taxes all that much more, and yet the tax base isn't here. And it's tough, and just looking at the, the school budget that's presented, I'm still doing my research on that, but I'm just not convinced that, that that's even a sustainable budget going forward, and it is just kicking the can down the road another year, or some of the funding lasts an extra year, then another two years, and then two years, you know, it's just going to be an implosion of, of, you know, budgetary concerns. And so, you know, it is disappointing too, and thinking about like some ideas to improve not only the cleanliness of my ward, but, you know, try and reduce some of the crime too, just not going to be able to do all the things that I was hoping to do, and knowing that, you know, this, my term's coming to an end, and I don't quite know that I've accomplished everything that I wanted to or came close to it. So it's very frustrating serving on the city council to anyone in the public who's watching this. You know, we really do need to foster some change here, and I think that we have a lot of great councilors here and great staff who are pushing in that direction, and we've seen that spark in Lewis, and I think we're so close to that Lewis and Renaissance that we know can happen, and we seem to keep pushing there as best we can, and we'll get there. So I know there's not a whole lot of direction, but I guess to summarize that, I'm very happy with what was presented by the city, although I, you know, much like us to see us do more. I'm still not sold on the, the school committee, the, the school budget, but I'm going to keep doing my research, and I know that any budget we do pass in the school side is also not going to meet the needs of our students, as it should. So municipal budgets are quite a tough thing, and so as a society, I think we really need to focus on where we want our tax money to go at different levels, and that is quite beyond our control as a city. So I'll kind of end it there, but it's been a very tough process.
Yeah, thank you, because several of your points really hit home, I believe. You know, one thing we can hope for, and I feel confident that the transmission line will probably come to fruition, and I know we can't go into this budget or any budget as that as a guiding principle, but I do believe that that will come to fruition, and that will definitely. But I do believe that that will come to fruition and that will definitely help this community. And just one other response to your comments, Counselor Jensen. You know, this council should be, this council should be proud that we had several departments sit down and develop plans to move our city forward. And the, the police chief, I thought, did a good, good job at his plan. And we're giving him some tools. I think if we can come, overcome the hurdle of lack of staff through, through no fault of the city council or the council before us, it's just in today's times, law enforcement is hard to recruit. But he's had some luck as of recent. And once we get our staff levels a little bit higher, I truly think he's going to be able to implement that plan as presented to us. And I believe that will make a difference in our, in our crime. Especially with the services we'll be providing to folks suffering from substance disorder issues and mental health issues. So we can be proud of some of this work that we did during the pandemic as a council. So I just want to share that. Counselor Chalinas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate you asking, you know, City Administrator Dotay, his opinion on this budget. And I trust that the work that they've done under his direction has been difficult, no doubt. You know, doing the additional shaving that they've done and then presented it back is impressive. And you know, I would just, I would just say that. I mean, on the one hand, you know, I, I also have feelings about realizing that, you know, these department heads were asked to present their needs. And yet, once that happened, you know, had to go back and, and continue to shave that down. And, and I know that that's not an, an easy thing, but like Counselor Clement, I think we're headed in the right direction. And I do appreciate the work that's been done.
Thank you. Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to clarify what I said a moment ago, I have no intent of casting any dispersions on city administration. The finance director, the city administrator, the deputy city administrator, they've done a hell of a job over the past year. They have done what we've asked of them in every instance. I look at things. We've had discussions, members of the finance committee, look at the trend of tax liens. And I'm thinking about the people that cannot afford to absorb an increase. That's where I'm coming from in this. I mean, it is difficult. I will spot you the fact that this is probably, this is going to be a harder year than it was last year. Last year, we had the motivation, the pandemic. That cut right to the quick and, and set us up for what we needed to do. This year, there are so many people that are thinking, ah, everything was great again. That's not yet. We've got a lot of people in this community that have not bounced back, probably some that will never bounce back. If we continue the current trend of absorbing by tax lien properties, what does that say about the city and how we're operating? Says to me, we're probably spending a little too much money or more than, maybe not too much money, but more than people can afford to give. I mean, this, I was listening to somebody, one of the talking heads on television recently. Apparently they're going out to the trees and, you know, that money tree, and they're just going to pick some more money. I don't think we have any of those in this town. If we did, we'd be better off. And unlike you, Mr. Mayor, I'm not convinced that the, the clean energy corridor is going to come to fruition. This current thing with the referendum, although I fail to see how, given the constitutions of the United States and the state of Maine that prohibit the passage of an ex post facto law, how can you pass something saying it's retroactive? I, I just, I, I don't understand that. But sharper legal minds and mine will debate that probably. And this thing will be held up in the court for another three, four, five years. Anyway, I just, that's where I'm coming from is the ability of the people to absorb. I know it's not where we'd like to be. But I think it's kind of where we have to be. I do appreciate the work that's been done to bring the city down. They actually came in a little bit under than what we suggested at our last session. Now, there's some others that are going to have to kick in or else, as I say, I don't know if I can support this budget. I thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? All right, looking at our, this is directed towards the city administrator, looking at our attendees list, it doesn't seem like first executive session attendees are here. So that we, I was hoping we might be able to move into an executive session before the general meeting, but I don't, I don't see that they're here. Do you, how about Dennis, any thoughts on that?
If you folks wanted to, you know, give me a few minutes, I can certainly contact the director, Director Jeffers, and, and so he could reach out. I, I don't think it'd be a problem. We probably have enough time to, to be able to squeeze that in.
Okay. Yeah. So why don't we try? Because you're right. I think that'll be a fairly short session.
Okay.
All right. So why don't we come back, you know, take three to five minutes, turn off our videos and, and audio and we'll come back in just under five minutes if we can, if you, if you need to, folks. I just don't want us all sitting here with our videos.
Okay, it looks like we're all back, correct? Seven, we are, so. Thank you to folks in the attendance. We had a little extra time between our workshop and we handled one of our executive sessions scheduled. So we appreciate your patience. This session for the April, for the April 20th, 21 city council business meeting will be conducted remotely and council members will only participate electronically. To those viewing online, please ensure that you join this meeting using the following website. If by chance you join this meeting using any other link, we ask that you log off and then re-log in using that website. Public comments on any item appearing on the agenda may be sent to public comment@lewismaine.gov prior to or during the meeting, and all comments received will be forwarded to the city council. Members of the public who are, who are logged into the meeting online can make a comment when invited to do so by raising, using your raisin, your raise hand button in the lower center of your screen. Once you're acknowledged, your microphone will be unmuted and we ask you to make sure you unmute it on your end. And councillors are also asked to raise their hands. With that said, the first thing, oh, Madam Clerk, if you could, please call the roll for attendance.
Sure, councillor from Ward One.
Here.
Ward Two.
Here.
Ward Three.
Present.
Ward Four.
Present.
Ward Five.
Present.
Ward Six.
Present.
And Ward Seven.
Present.
Thank you. Also, in attendance this evening, Mr. Mayor is Dennis Dote, City Administrator, Dale Doughty, Deputy City Administrator, Heather Hunter as the Finance Director, and myself as the City Clerk.
All right, thank you very much. And if we could bring in, the first item we'll be dealing with is the presentation of the Spirit of America Award to LEA. And I see Allison Linton is present. Is there anybody else in the attendees, Allison, that should be brought in? All right, so I have a, some brief comments that were prepared for me by Dotty, who does an incredible amount of great work for our community. So each year, the Spirit of America Foundation, a nonprofit based in Augusta, asks main municipalities to select individuals, projects, or organizations for the recognition of commendable community service. This is done usually in April of every year, which is a national volunteer, which is the National Volunteer Month. The foundation also holds a countywide recognition event every year. For 2021, the Lewiston City Council chose the Lewiston Education Association for its valiant and successful effort to provide meals to our children's during the COVID-19 related school closures. On March 16th, 2020, the very first day that Lewiston public school buildings were closed, the Lewiston Education Association began recruiting and managing volunteers. Over 100 LEA members began showing up at five nutrition distribution sites in the city, and they also rode along in eight vans that made door-to-door deliveries along the bus routes. Throughout the COVID-19 closure, this effort secured daily access to a healthy breakfast and lunch for all Lewiston students. LEA volunteers were proud to support the amazing work of LPS food service employees as well as Hudson transportation drivers. Over 1,500 volunteer shifts, a total of approximately 4,500 hours, were fulfilled by LEA members, their colleagues, families, and friends. And approximately 300,000-plus meals were served, and over 600 family nutrition boxes were distributed in partnership with the Good Shepherd Food Bank. And I must say, that was amazing. And Allison, I, our city council is so impressed with LEA and the work that you folks did through the pandemic. I appreciate Alicia Ray bringing this name, your, your organization forward for consideration. And you did have stiff competition with other organizations that also do a great job in our community. Let me just quickly show the certificate. And we'll make sure that that gets to you, and hopefully you've come up with a better frame than what we're providing. And with that, Allison, I'd love to turn it over to you for any comments that you would like to make.
Thank you for the opportunity. We absolutely are honored to receive this and acknowledge the great work of so many organizations around our city. During this time, the second the closure was announced, my email, my phone, everything just started blowing up with what can we do? And our, our members are like none other. They wanted to make sure that their kids were okay. As most of you know, our students are not just her students, they are our kids, and they become our kids for a lifetime. Their families become our families as well, and we needed to make sure that we were there for them. The beginning was really a scary time. Nobody knew what the future was going to hold, or, you know, what was what. I remember walking into a hardware shop to grab some masks for our volunteers, because that's where we were at. But the numerous folks that, that sprung into action, they absolutely deserve this recognition. And it's been a tough year for education. So this is a real pick-me-up for all of our membership, as well as our colleagues, friends, and families that also volunteered their time. So again, thank you very much. It's much appreciated.
Thank you very much. All right, any other brief comments from the city council? Hopefully, I covered most everything that everybody wanted to say. So again, thank you, Allison, and thank you for joining our meeting. Okay, we'll move to an update, reference to city actions regarding COVID-19 from our Deputy City Administrator.
I don't have a lot to report tonight, Mayor, just a couple of things. We continue to monitor the COVID cases in the county. As, as you, I think everybody knows, they're relatively high, staying somewhat high. But one thing I wouldn't, I am pleased to report is we had, St. Mary's had led, and we'd worked with some other entities to try to get some pop-up clinics at Longley School and other places. Those seem to be in jeopardy with the federal hesitation on the Johnson and Johnson vaccine. There's really pop-up clinics, it's best to have a single-dose vaccine. But I'm happy to say St. Mary's is going to go forward this Saturday with a pop-up clinic using the Moderna vaccine. And then they would schedule a second date on May 22nd. If anyone would like to, you can look in the paper, there's a couple of places where they're advertising it. But you can also go to St. Mary'sMaine.com. And right on their front banner, there's a place you can follow a link to COVID, and it tells you about the clinic and how to sign up. So I'm very happy we have something additional in the downtown.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Okay, see, and none. I want to take a motion to accept the minutes of April 6, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
It moved by Councillor Jolinas, seconded by Councillor Joy. Any comments or concerns? See, and none. Call the rolls.
For councillor from Ward Two.
Yes.
Ward Three.
I apologize, I did not get a chance to read them, so I will be abstaining.
Okay, thanks. Ward Four.
Yes.
Ward Five.
Yes.
Ward Six.
Ward Six.
Couldn't get the thing done mute for some reason or another, but the vote is yes.
Okay, thank you councillor. Ward Seven.
Yes.
And Ward One.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of six to zero.
Okay, thank you. We're now in public comment period. Any members of the public may make comments regarding issues pertaining to Lewiston City Government. And these, this period is for anything that is not on the agenda. So with that said, I will open it for public comments, and comments are to be brief, three minutes or less. And if you could identify yourself by name and whether or not you're a Lewiston resident. And I see one person's hand, Mr. Rubens.
Hello.
Hey, Peter, how are you?
I'm here, Rubens. I'm a member of the Grow LA Board, and I'm also a Chair of the Grow LA River Working Group. Our mission statement is to be the conduit between Lewiston and Auburn for best use of the river. It's time for us to put our energies together for the current LD 676 to reclassify the Anderskagen from Gulf Island Dam down through Brunswick. It's also a bigger picture to look at the next 40-year lease that Brookfield is starting to apply for in 2026. What do we want to see over the next 40 years? Two generations. Now is the time for us to start. Grow LA River Working Group is suggesting that the two cities work together on these two issues. And we have a suggested agenda. Some of the topics include reclassification from C to B with LD 676 is in committee now and soon ready for public hearing. Relicensing of the Monty Hydro is starting now, and it goes on through 2026. And again, it would be for a 40-year period, the next 40 years. We are suggesting that we work on this now and see what we want to see over the next 40 years. We'd like to see some suggested things, timed releases for aesthetics over the Great Falls. Before the Monty was built, water ran over the falls 40% of the time, 146 days a year. Now it runs 12% of the time, about 43 days a year. We'd like to see timed releases, say on a Friday night or a Saturday night. Time releases for kayak whitewater at Dresser's Rips in a portage there. Lower water control for Kruger Goddess. Laser lighting on the Great Falls when the water is running. And when the other 90%, when it's not running, laser lighting could still be there, and it would draw people downtown on Friday nights and Saturday nights. Publicize the Great Falls when it's running, and researching water flows in the canals for future recreation during the licensing. Some of the other things that we are suggesting is connecting the river trails to Riverland State Park, completing the walking river trails under Longley Bridge, so you don't have to walk through Yvonne's Car Wash to get to Veterans Park. Turnpike signage. At the turnpike, it says attractions, nothing there, it's blank. Why don't we have something like LA Power Falls, Riverfront Park, come and see us. Museum in the streets, the walking history trail is now up and running, the two cities work together on this. And we created a first-class history trail that brings people down to see what we're doing in our history. The LA Power Falls Riverfront Park is shovel-ready. Look at what Saco, Westbrook, and Bitterford are doing, and I think we can do it better. I'm hoping that we can have a workshop and preview our options and dreams. We look forward to working with you in Auburn, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, seeing no further hands raised, we'll move on to our regular business meeting.
Mr. Mayor, there's another hand.
Oh, okay. Brenda Cody, if we can bring her in. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Brenda Cody. I'm a resident of Lewiston. And I just wanted to ask what the status is on the outdoor pickleball courts that's been in the budget?
Yeah, so we're still working on a budget, so everything is still in discussion. So if you have an opinion on that, if you could share that with us, that would be great.
Well, I understand that the budget is pretty tight this year, but I just wanted to let you know that there is a, a group of us that enjoy playing pickleball, and right now, we have no place to play outdoors this summer. And so we just wanted to, you know, make sure that, you know, it, it's considered in our, you know, that there is a group of us that are, are concerned about that.
Yeah, thank you very much for bringing that up and taking the time to come before the council to share your thoughts. I will share with you that Councillor Jolinas has been actively advocating for you folks and just sharing, you know, things that you have shared with her with the rest of the council. So once again, thank you, Ms. Cody.
Will there be any update as to when you might be voting on this project?
We'll let our City Administrator respond to that at this point.
Yes, the, the target, I've been, look for the Finance Director, I don't have the list in front of me, I believe it was May 4th is, is what we're looking to adopt the budget by. I'm seeing her nodding ahead, so I think I have the right date. Heather, do you want to add to that?
Yes, if it is funded through Fund Balance, it would be May 4th. If it goes back to the LCIP, it would be June 1st, I believe. So those would be the two dates.
And where is it currently, Director Hunter?
It's in Fund Balance. I think we moved it over to Fund Balance.
Okay, so it, it has survived the process so far. There will be further discussions on the number of courts. You know, the, the amount of that initial year investment, I believe, so it's looking good right now.
Okay, thank you very much. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, seeing no other hands, we'll move on to, so first, row call vote?
Sure, all roll call votes for this meeting will begin with the councillor of Ward Two.
Thank you. Agenda item number one, please.
Item number one, amendments to the library policies regarding overdue materials and fees. Requested action to approve the proposed amendments to the library policies. City Policy Annual Number 39, as recommended by the Library Director and the City Administrator, said policy amendments to be effective July 1st, 2021.
Moved.
Move for passage, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, moved by Councillor Ray, and I think it was seconded by Councillor Clement. And with that, we'll turn it over to our Library Director.
Yes, the Library Board of Trustees and city staff, myself and other library staff are recommending that the city council amend the library's policies to eliminate the practice of collecting fines on overdue items. This is largely seen as a, as an equity issue for the community. The goal here would be to reduce barriers to access to the library. Right now, the threshold for being able to use your library card is to have fines not in excess of $5. And so this would no longer collect fines towards that total, opening up access to hundreds of adults at this point. And as I updated, the city council with the library did receive a, an anonymous donation. They cleared the overdue fines owed for children and teen accounts, which was wonderful. But this movement would prevent additional fines from being accrued by those child and teen accounts, as well as for adult accounts. It would be effective going July 1st, so the beginning of fiscal year '22. And we have been in conversation and working with the Auburn Public Library, and their plan is to do the same at this point.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Okay, seeing none, and for the, for the public notice, we have workshop this previously, there were significant questions. Okay, seeing none, and for the for the public notice, we have workshop this previously, there were significant questions we worked through. But just one quick question. In libraries that have done this, eliminated fines, have they seen any major reductions in thefts of books or. Significant increases in thefts of books or abuses of it, or has it been opposite of that?
No, it's been the opposite of that. What they're finding is that more books are getting returned. It seems that that when people don't feel like they're going to get scolded or or. Tard for any sort of fine, they do return the books, which is really what we want at the end of the day. And just to note again for for both the public and the council that this will not change our practice of. Billing library patrons if items are not returned after a set period of time, so that that continues to stand. There will still be accountability and responsibility for unreturned items.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? To the public? Back to the council. Call the roll, please.
Councillor from Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven?
Yes.
And Ward one?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Agenda item number two, please.
Item number two, order authorizing the acceptance of shared fifty fifty. Grant funding from the twenty twenty Maine Capacity Development Grant. And authorizing reimbursement of shared fifty fifty costs. To wa- to Auburn Water District for the joint evaluation. By TOMS Water Solutions to complete the risk and resiliency assessments. And emergency response plan in accordance with the America's Water Infrastructure Act of twenty eighteen. Requested action to approve the order authorizing the acceptance of shared fifty fifty. Grant funding from twenty twenty Maine Capacity Development Grant. And authorizing reimbursement of shared fifty fifty costs. To Auburn Water District for the joint evaluation by TOMS Water Solutions. To complete the risk and resiliency assessments and emergency response plan. In accordance with the America's Water Infrastructure Act of twenty eighteen.
So move.
Back here.
It moved by councillor Joy, seconded by councillor Ray. And I see our library director is still in the meeting.
Yes, Zoom won't let me demoter at this very moment.
Okay, so might as well just sit back and enjoy the meeting. Marcela, all right, so I see Kevin Gagnon is present and he'll be the staff presenting on this, all right? Good evening, Kevin.
Good evening, thanks for having me.
All right, you're all set to present?
Oh, thank you. As you can see by the request, All the Water actually. Saw the grant and put in for. Shared project. They've actually proceeded with their approval on their board. To move ahead with the project. This is an update from the. Two thousand and one. Vulnerability Act. They re-upped it in twenty eighteen. So that water systems can actually. Do a full vulnerability assessment, that would be joint plus our distribution. And then submit a certificate which is due to DEP by. This June thirty first, so. Quite a bit of work to do and and TOMS has put an excellent proposal in. To work jointly to get this done.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Councillor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Deputy Director Gagnon, can you just? So this went through Auburn Water District because they have the rights to the water. Is that correct?
They actually took lead on on applying for the grant. We have joint. Permission and joint rights to Lake Auburn, so. We're doing here, Sid put this under as a as a joint. We're not sure if we're going to get. The grant funding. And they actually went to their board on February seventh.
Okay, and do they have a? Big process similar to what we have in the city?
I believe they did check with other vendors. On who could do this type of work and they went with TOMS.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? To the public? Back to the council? And call the roll, please.
Councillor from Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven?
Yes.
And Ward one?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Agenda item number three, please.
Item number three, order authorizing the city administrator to take the necessary steps to sell the city owned property at Ford Darcy Drive. Requested action to approve the order authorizing the city administrator to take the necessary steps. To sell the city owned property at Ford Darcy Drive.
Move for passage.
Motion by councillor Clement. Seconded by councillor Joy. Heather, is there anything you need to present on this?
No, not unless the council has any specific questions, all the information was incorporated in your packet.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll, please.
Councillor from Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven?
Yes.
And Ward one?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number four, please.
Item number four, order authorizing the sale of real property. Located at the Auburn Lewiston Airport on Kitty Hawk Drive in the city of Auburn. Requested action to approve the order authorizing the sale of real property. Located at the Auburn Lewiston Airport on Kitty Hawk Drive in the city of Auburn.
I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
So move.
Okay, moved by councillor Clement, that sounded like a second from councillor Joy. Deputy City Administrator Dotay, anything you want to present?
Uh, good evening, just really quickly, I think the the packet covers everything, but just for the public, it. Is a Tambrands approach, the Auburn Lewiston City. Excuse me, the Auburn Lewiston Airport. Regarding a piece of land that they would like to purchase as part of their expansion efforts there in Auburn. The city, the airport board has approved that to go forward. The city of Auburn, it requires in order for that to go through, it does require each city council, both Auburn and Lewiston to approve the sale. And Auburn has already approved it, so now it's up to the city of Lewiston and to move that forward. I also just want to note if there is any question specifically, Rick Lynn and our airport manager is in the audience.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none to the public?
Mayor, councillor Clement has his hand raised?
Yeah, I'll bring it right back.
Sorry.
Okay, seeing none from the public, back to the council. And I'm not seeing hands raised right now because I must not be a host coming back into the meeting. Councillor Clement?
Having problems with all sorts of things here tonight. I have had one question raised by a constituent. Regarding the sale price of this piece of property. Versus the assessed value given it by the city of Auburn. And the. Theme of that inquiry was that it's being sold. At an extremely attractive price, that they're not getting enough money for it. It's not even close to market value. I'm wondering if somebody would care to address that.
So unless staff can, oh, well, actually councillor Jolinas, is that something you you'd be able to respond to? All right.
Um, it was something that the board voted in favor of councillor Clement, but there was a couple of contingencies attached. One was that there would be an appraisal conducted, the second it would be that would go through an FAA. Director Hunter, can you jump in? You're on that board with me, where should you go?
She's here. Yes, sorry. It would have to be released by the FAA, to get a release by the FAA, we have to. Have a fair market value. So in order to get that release, so the purchase and sale is based upon. Fair market value with a floor of. Twenty, I think it's twenty eight, twenty nine thousand dollars. And then the ceiling that Tambrands is willing to go to is also outlined in your your order. Right.
Okay, if I read this correctly, then you've got a minimum price of twenty seven thousand, I believe the. Cap on it is forty thousand and I believe the valuation is like a hundred and eighty one thousand. I'm just raising this concern for a constituent who. Who asked and thought that it was. Pound wise and. Or penny wise and pound foolish, I guess.
The F. Yeah, the FAA will not allow the sale to. Or release the property for sale if it's not at fair market value. Tambrands has made it clear that, let's say the appraised value comes in at sixty thousand. They're willing to go up to forty, if if. That's the case, then the sale would not go through.
That's right.
And it's my. Thank you for that clarification, thank you.
It's my understanding that land currently is landlocked, is that correct?
With the exception of one side of it.
Okay. All right, I see the director of the airport's got his hand raised, so if we could bring him in.
Working on it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, good evening, Rick. Did you have something you briefly wanted to add? Okay, Rick. Rick, we're not hearing you, I don't, if you can unmute your mic if you still wish to, there you go. Good evening. Yeah, for some reason, we're not hearing you. And it appears your mic is unmuted. All right. Yeah, we're not able to hear you, Rick. But we appreciate you trying, hopefully councillor Jolinas and our finance director covered most of what you wanted to share. Good, thank you. All right. So we still need a vote, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And I do believe I went to the public already with this. All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Councillor from Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven?
Yes.
And Ward one?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Agenda item number five, please.
Item number five, approval of the election warrant calling for a special municipal election to be held on Tuesday, May eleventh, twenty twenty one. For the school budget validation referendum. And recommendations from the city clerk registrar voters on actions necessary to conduct said election. Requested action, be it ordered by the city council that the election warrant be issued for the special municipal election to be held on Tuesday, May eleventh, twenty twenty one. For the purpose of voting for the school budget validation referendum and to approve the following recommendations from the city clerk registrar voters on actions necessary to conduct the special municipal election. A, that the hours for acceptance of registrations in person only prior to the May eleventh election. As required by Maine Revised Statutes Annotated Title twenty one A, Section one twenty two. Be set at eight thirty AM to four PM, April twenty first through May tenth. B, that the names of those persons who register during the closed period for registration shall be recorded in accordance with. Maine Revised Statutes Annotated Title one, Section one twenty two. C, pursuant to Title twenty one A, Section seven fifty seven, subsection seven. Absentee ballots will be processed at the polling place at eight, I'm sorry, at seven AM and any on our remaining shall be processed at eight PM if necessary. And D, to appoint the city clerk as the city's election warrant and the deputy registrar of voters as the city's ward clerk for the May eleventh election.
So moved.
Second.
It moved by councillor Jackson, seconded by councillor Jolinas. Any questions or comments from the council? Councillor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to clarify the process for absentee voting in this election. I think that's probably going to be a big deal still this year and just was curious if you could tell us about that timeline as part of this.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you councillor. So absentee ballots are currently available for the election, they became available the day after the city council received. The presentation on the school budget last week by the superintendent. So absentee ballots are available now and we are issuing them. By state law, they cannot be returned until after the city council votes to adopt the school budget, so that is slated for the evening of May fourth. So the next day, starting on May fifth, citizens can start returning their absentee ballots. And they have up until eight PM on election night, May eleventh, in order to do so. So the absentee ballot drop box, the new one outside the building, City Hall will be opened. The morning of May fifth and will be able to accept and receive absentee ballots that'll be returned by voters then.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none to the public? And back to the council. Call the roll, please.
Councillor from Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven?
Yes.
And Ward one? Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item six?
Reports and update?
Any councillors with reports or updates? Okay, seeing none, it's a gender item number seven.
Item number seven, any other business councillors or others may have relating to Lewiston City Government.
Councillor Ray?
Thank you, I'll be brief, but I sent an email to some folks about this, but I just wanted to thank. City leadership for the event that was put on last Saturday. I have heard such positive remarks and I think there was a, actually a nice story in the paper about the cleanup that happened through the public works department. Just a a real good signal of, I think, the direction that. Folks are taking and investing in the city and it was just so great to see the partnerships.
Okay, thank you. Any other? Comments from councillors? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to a gender item number nine and I'll entertain a motion to. Enter into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title one, Section four oh five six dash E. To discuss a legal matter with the city attorney.
So move.
Okay, moved by councillor Cleed, seconded by councillor Clement. Call the roll, please.
Councillor from Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven?
Yes.
And Ward one?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you all, we'll see you at the next executive session.